Today is August thirteenth. I have to look at the date. I don't know why. And I am, I'm going to start our meeting off by inviting everybody to stand for the.
We wish this flag to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So the very first thing we'd like to start off with is honoring our oldest male, Ann Northbrookfield. So we welcome tonight, Mr. Edmund Decodo. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yeah.
Great. And he is. And he is one hundred years old as of June eleventh, I see. Had a long career in truck driving, I understand, and was married to your wife for seventy-five years.
At least.
At least, seventy-five years. It's wonderful. So we are pleased to honor, honor you, and we invite you to share anything about yourself that you would like to share.
No, no.
That's okay, too.
Okay.
Okay. And if we can, we have a. We'd love to get a picture of you, and we invite our state reps up as well, and we have a couple of gifts. So we'll just kind of hang here.
Yeah.
And then we'll go to.
Good. Senator Peter Durant, very nice to meet you. Remember me last year? We came to your house. We were in a parade. We came to your house on your ninety-ninth birthday. And I told you I'd see you next year, and you said, I don't know about that. Well, here we are. Well, first of all, I just want to say congratulations on another year. It's, you're the oldest male in Northbrookfield. So what is the secret to getting to a hundred?
Clean living?
I'll never get that. That was a question. That was a question. Not really an answer. Well, we'll go with it.
He's still figuring out.
Exactly. But Edmund, it's my honor to present you with a citation. This is from the Massachusetts Senate that says, be hereby known, the Massachusetts Senate hereby congratulate Edmund, and I'm not going to try to argue pronunciations.
Decodo.
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 Very good.
Thank you. In recognition of the happy occasion of your one-hundredth birthday, and be further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, and that this citation be signed by the President and the Senator Karen Spilker and myself, Senator Peter Durant. Congratulations. So the same ten on your hundredth birthday, and it's signed by myself and the Speaker of the House, and now you have two. You have one that says ninety-nine, you have one that says a hundred. So I'll see you next year.
We have the Board of Selectmen in town. We have a plaque for you, our Golden Cane Award. And we do have a cane in town, but we are going to keep that displayed, and we'll add your name to the plaque there as well. So congratulations, and it's so nice to meet you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations on behalf of the town, too, and the Board of Selectmen. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So friends and family, you are welcome to stay for the meeting, or you are also welcome to to head out if you'd like. Sure.
What was that, Ed? Oh, he thought it was going to be cake, so we're out of here.
Thank you very much, guys.
Yes, thank you so much.
Also, he's the oldest veteran.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Have a good night.
Do you want the agenda as a souvenir?
Well, apparently he was a draw.
He must have, of course. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Take care.
Good to meet you. That would be great. I'm going to be away for the next two weeks, but I'll be back right after Labor Day. It's time for business. After Labor Day. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. See you later. All right. Thank you, everybody. And next, we do not have any minutes to approve, so we are moving on to the approval of warrants. I will entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number four for two-hundred-seventy-six thousand nine dollars seventy-four cents. School warrant for one zero zero five for thirty-seven thousand five hundred fourteen dollars forty-six cents. CBD, CDBG warrant number one zero zero six, forty-seven thousand six hundred forty dollars seventy-five cents. CDBG warrant number one zero zero seven, thirty-four thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars fifty-three cents. And general warrant one zero zero eight, four hundred four, four hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred eight dollars thirty-four cents.
So moved.
Can I? Well, second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything to say?
Oh, nope.
No, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those are approved. And next, we have financial items. We have a few spending requests. One from the Chief of Police for Police Department Training and Sally Door. And I saw that come through, but since you're here, can you just explain that a little bit?
Didn't know what you were talking about. The Sally Door repair?
The repair.
Yes.
Yep.
That's up now.
The door broke. It wouldn't open. We had to call them. Luckily, it was something easy. It was programming. It wasn't anything. So unfortunately, it cost us three hundred dollars to fix it, but one of the two doors just stopped working and kind of leaves us in a bad place if the other one goes.
So it's like a mechanical?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. So I will entertain a motion to approve that spending request for, I don't have the exact amount in front of me, but I think it's three hundred twenty dollars.
So moved.
Second, and you want to discuss it at all, or?
I think that's all that needs to be said.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have a training coming up. And so the cost for the conference is eight hundred dollars, the cost for the hotel stay. Can you just give me a final amount on that? Because I think I have two of the same.
It was eight hundred and.
Oh, and nine ninety. No, there it is.
Nine ninety, so it would be seventeen ninety?
Yeah. All right. So I will entertain a motion to approve those two spending requests for seventeen hundred ninety dollars.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Not for me. I don't know if you want to mention anything about it.
It's an annual training. We go there every year. It's the in-service floor for mass chiefs as well as their second-in-command. So it's more in-depth. It's also a great networking thing, as I think I put it my way to Mike that there's a lot of roundtable discussion, going over issues that you don't get when you hand it online. So it's beneficial to us, I feel. It's not just to get away, because I don't care about the getting away part. It's the actual training that matters in this case.
For sure.
Okay.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we also have a spending request from Emergency Management for six-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars seventy-four cents to Medical Warehouse Inc. for replacement parts for an AED for the Senior Center. Their AED got failed, and replacement parts are required to repair it. So I will entertain a motion to approve six-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars seventy-four cents.
So moved.
Second, is there any discussion?
Nope.
The only question I have is, I think at one point, we, when we officially approved these repairs, that the cost of the repair was going to come out of the budget of of the location where the AED is. So is that going to come out of the Senior Center budget? Or is that, oh, is Emergency Management asking to take on that?
I think Emergency Management was going to pay that. If you wanted out of this, I'll make that work and do some sort of transfer, assuming there's enough money in the Senior Center budget.
I think it.
It should be.
To me, it doesn't matter however they want to do it, but I know initially that was a part of our discussion, so.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
I'll see that it's done that way.
Okay. In the meantime, we can approve the spending request.
The actual spending request. Okay.
Yep. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We did the police conference.
Appointments.
So we have a couple of appointments tonight. We have caretaker of the Town Clock as Jeff Samuelson, Assistant Caretaker of the Town Clock, Jim Caldwell, and for Parks and Rec Committee, Nancy Waldron. So I will make a motion to approve those three appointments.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
Not unless anybody here who's going to be appointed wants to say anything.
I'd like to say something.
Sure thing.
Yeah. We were short a member for a while now, but we didn't want to just rush in and, you know, we want to take our time and find the person that we felt that fit well with our committee and with Nancy's experience with the Coalition, the Health of Northbrookfield, and helping organize events. Exactly the person we were looking for, and everybody on the committee is very pleased to have her on board. So we're so glad she stepped up and volunteered.
And I'm really excited to be part of this group. They've done some pretty amazing things, I think, in town, so everyone's a willing and all the way around, so I'm really excited about it.
Excellent.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you for agreeing to be a part of it, too.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And the next thing on our agenda is to review a quote for signage for no unloading, and that is outside of businesses on Arden Street. So we have a quote here for forty-seven dollars. Let me just make sure. Forty-seven dollars ninety-five cents. And then we talked about potentially adding more to that sign. Did that ever come up?
We're still figuring out a fee, if we can put the fee on the sign, if it's a general bylaw change, if it's.
It's, it seems to be leaning towards a bylaw. I've talked to a few people so far, a couple of my own check with, but as far as the master in laws go, there's nothing specific for that. So I talked to a couple of people that have this issue in their town, and they went to a bylaw thing. But I'm still, I want to do a little bit more research to see if we can make it easier.
Okay. And would that add an additional cost to this sign, if we were to add additional lettering?
I would assume it.
Probably.
And this is only for one sign.
Okay.
So.
So I'm going to make a motion that we table this until we get more information, and then. Second?
Yep.
Okay.
So moved, or second. Am I supposed to second or so move?
Sorry, I made the motion, so you second.
Okay, second.
Any other discussion?
Just that, yeah, we need to see how much more these are going to be with possible fine on them, and if we need to get multiple signs, because I don't know if one twelve-by-eighteen sign is going to be quite enough. So we'll have to see.
What needs to be put into any information about no loading is that there is an unloading zone on the corner of Maple and North Main. They failed to adhere to that, and that was specifically done through the Safety Committee, Highway, and the Board prior. That that's the unloading zone. They refuse to use it. That's why they're in the front of the shop. They need to be told to go over there again.
Yes, and that will be a piece of this, will be additional communication, so that people are aware that that is where the loading zone is, and that the front is for parking only.
Right. I just want to, because they ignore it. They ignore it all the time. It's been said to them many times not to park. They'll take seven spots.
Yep.
When we park their truck there.
All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no, we're tabling it. All right. The next thing is the, and I apologize, I'm just going to let you know, the contract for landfill swills. We discussed that and signed it in last week's meeting, so that's all set, and that's the reason we didn't go over that one. Under new business, the Finance Committee meeting with the Board of Selectmen is going to be rescheduled. And so now we are up to the USDA loan closing, and we just need to sign the documents. I believe we've voted on and approved everything. We just needed to update the documents so that we were, we have the correct signatory page.
There's quite a few, if you want to vote to sign them and then.
And then sign them afterwards? Yeah, okay. So I will accept a motion to approve, or to sign the USDA loan closing documents.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And the next thing is to sign the State Primary Warrant. So I'm just going to read this. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of Northbrookfield, who are qualified to vote in the primaries, to vote at the Senior Center on the third day of September twenty-twenty-four from seven AM to eight PM, and for the following purpose. To cast your vote in the state primaries for the candidates of political parties for the following offices. Senator in Congress, Representative in Congress, Counselor, Senator in General Court, Representative in General Court, Clerk of Courts, and Register of Deeds. So this was, this will be signed the thirteenth of August twenty-twenty-four. So that's September third at the Senior Center is the state primaries. And I will accept a motion to sign that warrant.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next item is to accept the resignation, to accept a resignation. This is on our Police Department. It says, Dear Chief Smith, this is a formal written notification regarding my current position of employment. I regret to inform you that I've been offered and accepted another full-time position as a police officer in the town of Barry. My last scheduled shift will be on August twenty-fourth twenty-twenty-four from, well, his hours. As previously discussed, I had already arranged for a scheduled time off from August twenty-eighth to August thirty-first. I will still be managing the scheduled car show on August twenty-fifth and available for emergency situations that week. My first scheduled shift in the town of Barry is September fourth twenty-twenty-four. I want to thank you for the time, opportunity, and camaraderie the Northbrookfield Police Department has provided for me over the past three years. I've learned an abundant amount of skills while serving here that will carry me through the rest of my career, which I am thankful for. It's been an honor serving with each officer within the department, and I wish the department well in the future. If there's anything I can do to help ensure an easy transition, please let me know. Respectfully, Officer Mike Sawyer. So we're sad to see Officer Sawyer go, but wish him all the best and thank him for his service to Northbrookfield. Oh, we do need to, oh, it's a motion to accept the resignation.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
I'll just say thank you, Mark, for your service to the town.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so.
Spending requests.
Spending requests, yeah.
Well, you got to discuss authorizing a new.
Oh, right. Yep. So that leaves the department one officer down, and so I turn it to you to tell us what you need.
What was it? I need to, as you know, you were here for that. Last year, we filled it up, so we were at the six full-time police office, because there's lack of part-time police officers and the overtime that it generates. Not having that officer, I'll give you an example. This coming month, when I don't have, I'm already looking at five thousand plus dollars in overtime, and that's without anything else happening. That's just to fill shifts. When we had the extra guy, when people were out, extra person, we would have to backfill it. But now we're in a place where with not having that officer, it's going to be a financial destruction of our budget. As we said when we negotiated to get it in the first place with the Board and the Finance Committee, that it's detrimental. And now the guys, the other thing that we're looking at is, as we talked about, when we're at this level of manpower, and I'm also going to be losing another one come late December for maternity stuff. What happens now is we're getting to the point where we're going to be forcing people in, and as a discussion we have, we don't want to do that. We talked about, we can have all the money in the world for overtime. It's not a place that we want to put the guys in. Because when you start messing with their time off and you start ordering them in, it creates a bad atmosphere all around. So we're just, even now, I'm starting to get a little nervous of getting this process going, of getting somebody, because the longer I go, we're talking to five, six thousand dollars hit at least every month until someone's in that position.
Okay.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the authorization of a new hire for the Police Department full-time.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
I just think it's a necessity. We have to fill a vacant position. Like he stressed, it's a very important thing for multiple reasons. It's not just budgetary reasons, but to make sure we have people in those spots. Is there any way to fill it with a couple of part-timers, worst-case scenario, if we don't find a full-time?
And that's where we say, it's hard to find part-timers right now. It's extremely hard because of the changes that we talked about with leasing that anybody who wants to be a part-timer now has to go to a full-time police academy. And we went through all the ones that bridged in into it, which means they took an intermediate academy to bring them up to full-time status. But the pool is pretty thin. The pool is pretty thin right now to find full-timers, so losing Mark was, it's, it's, it's a terrible loss to us, because he was a great police officer, and I can only hope to find somebody like that to get back in the position. But as far as finding part, it's, it's hard. I mean, I was trying to get, even if I could get one or two, just to help with the overtime when we were at full staff. And it's just, it's very, very slim pickings out there to put the right person in. And I just don't want to, I'm not going to put the department in a place where I'm just going to take anybody.
Right.
They have to fit in this town, and they have to want to do it for the right reasons, so.
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You are authorized to hire. You're welcome. So now we have the spending requests. So we have one for the Town Collector for four hundred sixty dollars. I will entertain a motion to approve that. It's for ten thousand window envelopes. And they're for tax, the fiscal year twenty-five tax bills.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the next one is also from the Town Collector for three thousand dollars. Postage for the postage machine, and she needs to add postage funds to the postage machine. Okay. So I will entertain a motion to approve three thousand dollars for postage.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then along with that, we also need to discuss Police Department Prior Year Bill and the potential for a special town meeting.
Here's a second Prior Year Bill two from Town Hall for postage, Inc. That was, actually, I didn't, I don't have it in my packet. Do you remember how much that was?
I was not aware of that.
Okay.
All right. So.
We just have to authorize a meeting, or?
Well, the.
We just have to discuss.
Opening one and maybe scheduling one, maybe three weeks from now.
Okay.
It would be a quick meeting.
Yeah, we could just do it.
Is that something we can tack on to our?
You could probably tack it on to a Board of Selectmen meeting.
Yeah, we've done that before.
Okay.
If the moderator's amenable. I, I don't know if you want me to draft a bylaw for the, the fine to also put on there.
That would be great.
We can talk about that, and I'll draft something.
All right.
So I will, do we need to vote on that tonight, or we?
Um.
Can just discuss it?
I have to look at the calendar and see, because I have to have it, you guys have to sign it, and then it has to be signed by a constable and posted, and that needs to be posted for fourteen days, so I need to work out.
Scheduling and when our moderator is available.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So let's table that discussion as well, and when we figure out a date, we can revisit. Okay. So the next thing is the contract for BSC Group and the Downtown Complete Streets. And this is a, a contract with BSC Group to oversee the Downtown Development Committee's Complete Streets project, season one. So I will entertain a motion to sign this contract to work with BSC Group as the engineering, as engineering oversight.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
Nope.
This is one we've looked at before, and we've talked about it in the past. It's, it's part of that grant, and so it's for eighty-five thousand dollars, and it's, the grant money does cover that. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next thing is projects and activities report. So.
Here's. And I'll put this online. That's, the only one I didn't have was fire. They typically will give me a report anyway, so I will just amend that when they, or attach it when they send the report in.
Okay.
I don't know if you, you're not going to read it here. I'll just put it online.
Probably not. Okay, so.
Let everybody know that it's available.
Yes. So we have now asked for our departments and committees to give us a progress report and project report, activity report, update monthly. So we, that's what this packet is, and that will be online, so you can see what our committees and boards are doing. Thank you for that.
If we don't go online, can we get a printed copy of it?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And now we are up to our public comment period, so I will entertain public comments, ten minutes for each.
Take this one.
I have a few things, but I'll make them fast. If you want, I'll read the three things and then open the floor. That way I won't use up.
Okay, fair.
The rail trail from Brickyard Road to Route Nine is about to go underwater because the beavers have dammed up the pond down by the northeast Brookfield Line, Cross from Shorties. And we're about three inches from losing the rail trail down by the pipes that go underneath there. North Street is affected by this down on the other side of the swamp area. If you go by North Street where Initial Farms is, the water is this far from the road now. I know we've had a lot of rain, but it's the beavers that are doing this, and they need to be taken care of. I went over there with Jason Benoit two years ago to East Brookfield, and they didn't care because it doesn't affect them. But if that beaver dam breaks, it's going to wash that road out right there. Needs to be put in a beaver-deceiver there. That was that. What happened to the tree removal project at the Water Department for the safety of the homeowners on the south side of the tree line? A contract was agreed to and signed with the town getting four to five thousand dollars, and the trees removed for safety along the boundary. I know it's coming up, but.
Okay, yeah.
I've been in contact with Jepson regarding that. They've been pushing back on it. Their claim is that they can't sell the lumber because the mills aren't accepting pine right now. I don't know if that's true or not, but we do have a contract in place, and that's something we, we need to discuss, whether we want to take action to enforce it. But they don't seem to want to fulfill their part of the, part of the contract. And it's not even the money so much as just getting the, the.
Well, it's for the safety of the residents.
Exactly.
Because if one of those hundred footers falls on the soaks.
Exactly.
Or anybody else coming down, and the soaks will remain pushed for this. Because if one of those hundred footers falls on the soaks or anybody else coming down, and the soaks were the main push for this, uh, two years ago. But that needs to be followed up.
I have been in contact with them and they, it's, they're not moving.
I, I, and it's not up to me, but I would suggest getting somebody else if they're not doing it. Because they've breached the contract.
Oh, they absolutely have.
I think there was a time limit on that being done, not positive, but, uh, I have to look at the contract again. And they haven't done anything. They kept putting it off, the wa, the ground was too soft, too much snow, too much rain, too, finally, they didn't want to, want to do it. Okay, two weeks ago, uh, flags were discussed here, uh, and you wanted to take them down and put them up for different holidays. You said we can't keep buying new flags. I said that the same people for years have been buying the same cheap flags over and over, which is true. You said that you would look into buying better flags, I don't know if you did or not. For one thing, I believe the flags were not purchased with taxpayer money, but with donation money through N B Helps. Pretty sure I donated to that, so it's not a taxpayer thing. The board voted to take down the flags, and all of a sudden, they were down. I didn't know if there was a time limit or, you didn't discuss.
We did, yes, yes, we did. We talked about, so the timeline for the flags is to put them up a week or two before Memorial Day and then remove them a, a week or two after Fourth of July, and that depends on our volunteer schedule. Which is why I'm giving a week or two, which is why I suggested a week or two.
Yeah.
And then put them back up a week or two before Veterans Day. So they'll go back up again a week or two before Veterans Day.
And stay for how long, well, a week or two?
It's still a week or two after Veterans Day.
Okay.
Yeah. And I, I have started looking into other options for more permanent, um, flags. I'm in contact with Spencer because they've got some options. I don't particularly love their flag version that's up there, but I did really like the veteran images that they had up there. They had really nice memorials. And I agree with you, yeah, there was a, certainly was a fundraiser, but we, N B Helps has one person on it. So, um, right now, we don't have anybody to coordinate or organize that, which is why it falls to the board to organize.
There are open positions on that now.
Absolutely, if anyone wants to join.
It could be filled and happy if need be.
Yep.
As a patriot with love for this country and this town, I have many veteran family members, alive and deceased, who fought for the right to fly the American flag.
Yes.
I would like to see the flags, American and POW, go up before Labor Day and stay up until after nine eleven, like they should. Please revote and consider the people that gave us this right. If need be, I will pay for the new flags and welcome any donations from patriots in this town.
So your request, just so I clarify, your request is to have them go up before Labor Day weekend?
Memorial.
Oh, you, so you said Labor Day, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, so you want them up before Memorial Day weekend and to.
That's what we used to put on.
And to stay up for six months.
Until nine eleven, that's how they used to be.
Nine eleven, but not for Veterans Day.
Those days before nine eleven, I believe.
No, Veterans Day is in November.
November.
And I agree with you, I also come from a military family and, and have veterans and people in my family that I, that I love and would like to honor. But what I don't like is for our flag to be torn apart and to be torn to pieces.
When it gets torn apart, take it down and put up a new one.
Yes.
Take them all down.
Well.
They should be flying. Most of the towns around here fly their flags for that duration.
They actually do not, they're not up in any other town right now.
Yeah, I, I too, um, want to ask to revisit and reverse the vote to take down the flags. They should be put up for, before Memorial Day, and I said take down after nine eleven too, but if you want to keep them up to Veterans Day, that's even better. Okay, I drove through, Barry, Brookfield, Westbrookfield, Ware, Warren, Palmer, Paxton and Holden. All of them have their flags out. All of them are up, their flags are out flying on their flag poles. So we have the distinction of being the only town stripped of our flags in the middle of summer.
We're not the only town, but, okay.
Well, we are, okay? So, and let me just say, it is a slap in the face to our veterans and patriots. Put the flags back up now as in tomorrow now. Uh, the removal of the, of the flags under the guise that they will need to be replaced is wrong. These flags are not fragile, they are made for the outside, they're made out of nylon. As John just said, if one rips or tears, replace it. The flags across from me were mint and they were, they was clean, intact. This was only the second, uh, season they've been up. So these flags, oh, and again, these flags were purchased by money raised, I'm sure we can do it again, or our new administrator here can make a grant proposal. I mean, not that, not that a bunch of flags cost that much, but, um, so please repeal that terrible unnecessary vote and then take another vote and put the flags up now, back up now.
Do we want to address the flag and then we'll talk about the beaver eradication after that?
Sure.
Because we still have to talk about that.
Yeah.
So I'll say, you know, I agree with everybody, I'd love to see them up all year long. We can perhaps entertain keeping them up like everybody wants to, I think we're all in agreement, we want to see them up. And we might just have to figure out a way to replace them as they're getting too destroyed, make a determination. Like when a flag needs to be retired.
So for me, um, I think we need a group or an organization then to manage the, the care of the flags if we're going to do that. So I would invite you to join the North Brookfield Helps team and perhaps support that project. And I'm more than willing to turn that over to somebody else, and if, I mean.
I think we have to do that, but I, I really want the flags up now. To take them down after two months and then put them up again, we can verify people to put them up once, you know, once and take them down. Never mind, put them up, take them down, put them back up and take them down.
Since my husband is the person that does a lot of that, I can tell you right now, it doesn't take very long.
Okay, you know, that's not the point though, that's not what I'm here. I'm here asking you to put the flags back up now and leave them till, either after nine eleven, or I would really like Veterans Day.
I seem to remember being at a meeting not that long ago, where this was discussed. And the discussion was that, that the flag, as well as the flag poles, were not of a very high quality. And there was no one in this room that disagreed with that. And there was discussion of how the flags got bought and why we bought the flags. And there was some things said about possibly the wrong flag being bought and that the poles were inferior and the poles were breaking. And that there seemed to be pretty unanimous consent that the flags were not really what we needed to fly all year long. I don't think there was anybody in the room that thought flags should not fly all year long.
No one's asking.
It was the reality that the flags we have are not high enough quality to do that. So therefore, as opposed to having the flags on the ground, which is exactly what we had.
It is, yeah.
We took them down.
Took a couple.
Had a plan to put them back up. And the discussion was that the long term, we need to look at having better flags. Now, how we went from that to this today is a little disturbing. It's almost like we're looking for an issue here. There's nobody that doesn't want to fly the American flag downtown. Nobody.
Agreed.
Uh, excuse me, but no one is talking about keeping them up all year. You just have to keep them up all summer, like all the other towns do.
Okay, I'd like to, okay, we've had, we've had the discussion, so now I'm going to bring it back up here. And so Vaughn, do you have anything you'd like to?
I'd like to try to figure out a compromise here that would kind of try to meet in the middle with everybody here. I mean, what we all agree on is we want to see the flags out. The issue is when they'll be out. We have inferior flags, we could have better quality ones. Perhaps we can put out the inferior ones for now, and as they take damage, we have to take them down as they take the damage. And slowly look at ways to fund buying new ones to replace them. If we have to continue this conversation to another meeting, but, you know, continue on with the mindset that we are going to keep looking into this.
I personally, uh, a few weeks ago, took down two flags because they're hanging by one, you know, piece. And I don't think anybody wants to see them on the ground.
No.
I think that's the issue. We leave these flags up too long, they're going to be on the ground, and then there's going to be uproar about that. So, uh, personally, I think with the quality of the flags we have, that's, the, uh, situation or the suggestion that was, took place was the right one for the current, uh, flag situation. Because, you know, unless you're going to have somebody keeping an eye on them every day and make sure they're all secure, you're going to wind up with them on the ground.
Well, and I think that's just it, we don't have a group that monitors or cares for them at the moment.
That's just the thing.
And so it does fall to the board to make those decisions.
And what you're going to have is people complaining on Facebook that somebody needs to take care of this and get back into the same situation. People want to take care of things, they need to step up and join the groups that do take care of these things. It's not all about the town should do this because the people are the town. And it's getting to the point where there's so few people involved that it falls on just a couple people to monitor these things, and then all you do is get pushed back on Facebook and it's very discouraging. So, you know, until we can get good quality flags that are meant to stay up for a long period of time, I think what we're doing right now is the right decision. It's my opinion.
Well, I'm afraid I don't agree.
Sorry, we're, I'm sorry for moving back up here. So Vaughn, if, do you have anything further to?
I mean, I, I do see everybody's perspective on this, and the thing is, we don't have the manpower to pick up these flags that fall like this. And to Brandon's point there, it is going to cause a stir if, oh, look, the town is keeping all these American flags just laying in the road, getting run over by cars. That's going to almost be a worse problem than what we're dealing with now. So I, that, that doesn't help.
So if there's no further motions, I'd like to move on to the beaver issue, please.
Okay, um, I mean, I know we didn't budget any money for beaver eradication this year. Is there any way, anything could be transferred to figure something out there? I mean, because this sounds like it's going to eventually be a big problem.
That I don't know, I think this, I, I think we're going to have to look into it and just see what the funding looks like and, you know, probably talk to conservation about what our options are.
Just let you know that the, another three inches and there's going to be a washout and we're going to lose a great resource for walking, hiking, biking.
It's, it's been constant at that level for about six months, it hasn't.
No, it hasn't, it hasn't been that high.
Yeah, I, I run there every week.
Down there Saturday.
Yeah, I was too.
I have pictures, it's this far from going over the road.
It's been that far from going over for months.
Okay.
But it's been constant for months.
Just, just for your information, uh, beavers are under the purview of Board of Health.
Board of Health, okay, thank you, I will. So we'll reach out to Board of Health, um, figure out what our options are and figure out what kind of funding we might have and take a look at it. Is there any other public comment tonight?
Yeah, again, I want the flags put up and stay up all summer.
Joanne, we don't have a motion for that, and we're not entertaining any more discussion around it.
And, and no one is talking, these, these two men here, talking about the flags falling up. I saw those flag, those two flags hanging, but that wasn't because the flags were bad, it was because the hook holding them was bad. So yes, you should take those down. But no, no flags have fallen on the street, the flags, I monitor the flags, I look at the flags. They were perfect except for those two flags, and that was a, wasn't a flag issue, that was the hook holding our issue.
Yes, we're aware that there are issues with both the pole and certain flags. But we have moved on from this discussion, so if there's nothing new or further, we have not made a motion, we are not making a motion, we are not changing our minds right now. We will look into more permanent flags and.
Okay, I have one question, so is this going to be standard operating practice, we put them up for Memorial Day, remove them right away in, uh, the beginning of, uh, August? Is that, is that it?
The schedule, the, the schedule that was voted on last meeting was to install the flags a week or two before Memorial Day. Remove them after the Fourth of July, a week or two after the Fourth of July.
Yes, I understand.
And then put them back up a week or two before Veterans Day. That's the schedule, and to take them down a week or two after Veterans Day.
For now, it's temporary.
Until we can find either a group that's going to monitor the flags, like N B Helps, or we can find a more permanent solution.
And then we'll hopefully have the flags up all summer.
Be happy to revisit it. Okay. So we have one announcement tonight. Just got to go backwards a little over here. So we want to invite everybody to the, um, the Town, Brookfield's Town takeover at Polar Park, August twenty-seventh. The Blue Sox will be playing, the Toledo Mud Hens with a game start of six forty-five. It's five dollars from each ticket ordered through the QR code on the flyer or the link on the website under news and announcements. And it will be donated, the five dollars will be donated to the Friends of the North Brookfield Townhouse. So it's a, it's a fundraiser for our town specifically, which is really nice. And then also the East Brookfield fireworks. Uh, North Brookfield's own Tabby LeBlanc will be singing the National Anthem. And there will be other highlights celebrating all of the Brookfields, should be a great time, and we hope everybody can join us. And I believe that's it for this evening, and, um, we are going into executive session next for reason number two. Conduct strategy, strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Or conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Uh, we will only enter back into a, a meeting afterwards to adjourn. We thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, so I make a motion to enter into the section for reason number two. Group Canada, yes?
Yeah, I didn't see it till last week.
He didn't come down, so I, I called it.